All right, 7:00 PM. So this is the Pembroke Planning Board meeting of April 28th, 2025. Please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through an audio recording, which will be used to ensure an accurate record of proceedings produced in the minutes of the meeting. All comments made in open session will be recorded. PAC TV is providing this service live on Comcast Xfinity Government Access Channel 9. Those without cable, visit YouTube for live streaming. And Board Member Jim Noon is participating via remote participation in accordance with the requirements of 940 CMR 29.10 via speakerphone due to geographic distance. All votes during this meeting will be made via roll call. All right, so what do we have first on the agenda, Sue?
Public hearing SP 325 is in your first order.
Okay, great. All right. So our first order of business is a public hearing. This is public hearing SP 3-25 on the application of Jason Cook on behalf of Somewhere Else Tavern, Inc., 65 School Street, Pembroke, Mass., requesting a site plan approval under the zoning bylaws of the Town of Pembroke, Section 5.7 Site Plan Approval. The applicant proposes to construct a temporary seasonal tent with front, rear, and side offsets of the approximate property line. The establishment is located at 65 School Street, Pembroke, in Business District A, as shown on assessor's map, FA5, Lot 33, and 275. All right, just some ground rules for the public hearing. We'll hear from the applicant and his representative. Then the board will ask questions, and then we'll take some time for public comment. So let's get started. Let us know who you are.
My name is Jordan Nubio, Nubio Consulting LLC. I'm here on behalf of Somewhere Else Tavern, Inc. for a temporary site plan approval at 65 School Street, Pembroke, Mass. Do you want me to go over the plan a little bit here?
Well, just let's make note to the board that there was a finding by the ZBA to allow the variance on the sideline setback, right?
Yes.
Okay. So they received their variance on that. And this is to approve a site plan for the tent being put in the rear of the building. So just give us a quick rundown of what you propose to do.
Yeah, you know, the existing site contains parking and the existing restaurant building. It's a very simple site. There's woods in the rear of the site. The applicant is proposing, and just of note, they have put up this temporary tent for the last four years. They're proposing to put it in the same location as they had previously. It's a 30-by-60-foot tent. The plan that you probably have in front of you shows the location of the tent. It also shows the offsets in the middle of the plan that was mostly for the zoning board. And on the right side of the plan, it shows a location of a bar, a stage, and some seating and the entrances. They are proposing some temporary barriers along the edge of the tent just for traffic control. They've also used those previously for that purpose. I don't think there's really much else to say. It's a pretty simple plan, simple concept. Just to say again, yeah, they have been doing this for many years.
Okay, so this is an extension of the existing use at the site. Right? So your capacity has gone up?
Yes.
Okay. And tell us a little bit about the parking and how that's affected the parking.
It still meets the town parking requirements are one vehicle per four seats. So it's even with the added seating, it still meets, as indicated in that table of dimensional requirements, still by far meets the parking requirements of the town.
Okay.
And just of note, I think operationally, Jason, I think when the tents open, there's less people indoors and more people outdoors. So there kind of is a shift in the seating, but even if they were full capacity based on the seating, it still meets their dimensional requirements.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
A little confused about why this is requiring site plan for something temporary. I think it affects us, the parking.
Yep.
And it looks like they're eliminating eight parking spots that in essence they don't really need. So I don't see a problem with it.
Any other questions from the board?
What's that? Well, I didn't understand that question.
You've eliminated eight spots, but it doesn't look like that's going to affect your...
Oh, okay.
Your plan at all. And this is temporary. So what happens during the wintertime? Do you take down the tent?
Yes.
Okay.
If you left it up with all the weather, it would destroy it, so it's mostly...
And I understand you're going before the select board to talk about the outdoor entertainment?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Okay. Heather? All right, we'll allow a couple of minutes for public comment, so if anyone would like to come up and give us some comment, you're more than welcome to do so. All right.
What are the dates?
What are the dates?
When does it come down?
That's a question for you guys.
Oh, sorry. I'll leave that to the applicant.
Hi, I'm Jason Cook. I'm the owner of Somewhere Else Tavern. What was that incident?
Just curious when it comes down.
Right around Thanksgiving.
Okay.
You know, it's a valuable piece of equipment. New England winters wouldn't be a real burden to that.
Okay.
This is, as Joe had said, this is something we've done in years past. We've changed some things around to take care of hopefully having no noise problem. We have a very good rapport with our neighbors, quality air. He has allowed us in the past years and to continue using his parking and Abway Machine. We monitor the, we do parking, myself and another gentleman that helps me when we have this music outside. So it's, you know, it's all contained and done the right way. Joe had mentioned some barriers. That's in, we conform with the fire department. That's something that is mandated. So we do that, of course, with them, with Mr. Shea and the building inspector last year. So, you know, make sure our extension cords are all right. We've gone down this road numerous years, so we feel as though we can do it again safely and provide a good fun spot for some people to stay in town instead of going down to Plymouth to see live entertainment. So hopefully, we could get this pushed through.
Okay.
I don't know if you folks can help me, but what is the next step if I'm approved here tonight? I haven't been approached or gone or talked to anybody. I wasn't aware that we needed to see the Board of, the Select Board.
Well, that may or may not be the case. I don't know. You'd have to talk to them about it. But Sue, you can direct them, put them in the right direction.
Thank you. All right, great. The reason why you haven't had a scheduled appointment yet is they're waiting for this.
Of course.
So once, if this gets approved, then I will send everything over to the Town Manager's office.
Great, thank you, ma'am.
And then proceed from there.
Okay. Answer my question. Thank you very much.
We won't push it, we'll just gently shove it.
All right. Thanks, folks, for your time.
All right, so as there's no public comment, I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close public hearing SP 3-25.
Okay, all right. I have a roll call vote. Dan?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And I'm an I. All right. Now, you have the conditions that have been prepared in advance for this. And they were in your packets ahead of time, so we could read through them in the interest of time.
Can I do a motion just, or do you want to read through them?
No, I'll accept a motion to accept and pass the conditions as presented.
Is there anything anybody has a problem with? Okay. All right, I'll make a motion to approve application SP 3-25 with the draft conditions. This is SP 425. Well, whichever SP it is. I'll make... Yep.
I was just curious, I mean, this is a temporary structure. Do we really need to record this with a registry of deeds or as one of those conditions or...
I don't think you do. These conditions, I don't think, are recorded, are they? Do we record conditions?
Generally, yes.
Generally?
You record the plan or the conditions or I think it...
You record the plan.
Okay.
It doesn't hurt to record the plan.
No, I mean, it's just more, you know, something else that they have to do that, again, for a temporary structure.
Well, who does that? Do you do that, Sue?
No, you do, but actually, I'm sorry, it's the plan and the conditions. You do need to record them.
Yeah.
Okay, we just figured we'd ask if we could get...
Yep, okay.
All right.
All right, do you have a motion? And do I have a second? Okay, roll call vote. Dan?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Jim?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Great, I'm an I. All right, you're good to go? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thanks for all the advanced stuff. We appreciate it. Okay, Sue. I have to get my agenda so I can open the public, the next public hearing. All right, we have a continued public hearing that we're going to open now. This is public hearing number SP 125. This is continued from March 24th, 2025, and April 7th, 2025, on the application of the Town of Pembroke, care of David Newall Crocker Design Group, 2 Sharp Street, Unit A, Hingham, requesting site plan approval under the zoning bylaws of the Town of Pembroke, Section 5.7 Site Plan Approval, to construct a state-of-the-art public safety facility consisting of both police and fire personnel on the property. We'll also run this concurrent with the public hearing number SP 2-25, which is also continued from March 24th, 2025, and April 7th, 2025, on the application of the Town of Pembroke, care of David Newell Crocker Design Group, 2 Sharp Street, Unit A, Hingham, requesting site plan approval under the zoning bylaws of the Town of Pembroke, Section 5.7 Site Plan Approval, to propose to construct a new fire substation, which is located at Zero Monroe Street, Pembroke, Mass. All right.
Great, thank you. So for the record, David Newall with Crocker Design Group, the civil engineer for the property for both projects. So the first up on your screen, we have the headquarters building. This is just showing the rendering as we had shown last time. I think the main comments we'll make here, we kind of ran through the general plans last time and went through everything.
Yep.
Materialistically, between this plan and the last plan, all flows the same, but just addressing some of the peer review comments from Deb. So we received a letter from Deb back where we were able to address her comments as they dealt with stormwater on site. Additionally, we had some comments and feedback we received on traffic and from some of the abutters that we were able to make those changes to the plans. So make it easier for you to see, zoom into the front here. So along Washington Street, as you head onto Barker Street, there's a proposed sign here now, where my cursor is, that's for a 20 mile an hour sign. And additionally, another sign here. There is one sign now for yield, but proposing a second yield sign, new paint striping. That's all within Mass DOT right-of-way, so we have an application in with them for approval. So ultimately, they will need to approve it, but were items that we did propose to help slow down traffic for folks traveling around that corner. Additionally, along this southern property line here, we added a stockade fence and a larger buffer planting, so just creating a better landscape buffer to the residential abutter to the south. So just to help screen the property from this, stockade fence with landscaping. Those are kind of the main changes upfront. Most of the other changes on our end were all the subsurface stormwater, making some minor tweaks to that design. But ultimately, the overall plan here stayed a lot of the same with some of those minor tweaks. For the substation, oh, sorry, before I jump to the substation, we did get a copy of some conditions. We read through them today. We didn't have any exceptions. We were agreeable to those draft conditions as well for this project.
And there were a couple of concerns that Deb had pointed out that were put into the conditions, but just basically pointing them out, and you've covered them.
Yes, covered them. It's, you know, adding basically a signature block underneath the registry block, little minor things like that that are covered for ultimately what will be recorded at the registry for the plans. But nothing, nothing in those conditions were of concern for us. Additionally, on the substation, again, some minor tweaks, we added to the landscape buffer to this abutter as well on the planting plan, some stormwater tweaks we made. We did add a note for the flagpole, so we basically will get that ironed out, her comment about the setbacks. We had discussions with the building inspector. He didn't make a determination yet, but basically, once we get specifications from the contractors, what they'll actually build, we'll submit to him. And if it needs to be moved out of the setback, we'll move that and handle that accordingly at that time. Another comment was made on the dumpster enclosure. We looked at other locations, but given the grade, and basically, it goes up a hill here, it's really kind of tucked into the hill. It's behind the building, there's wooded area behind it. It really is kind of the best spot for it to be hidden from public view within the right-of-way, and it'd also be hidden from the two abutters with how this grade builds up around it. So we did look at other options, but we still believe this is the best spot for it for functionality and from an aesthetic standpoint. Let's see, did I miss updates on this one? I think that pretty much covered it. Again, we've got draft conditions on this that we read through and were acceptable, too. There was a few things that Deb had written through from her stormwater review for conditions that, again, we were acceptable to and didn't have any objections with. So I think with that, we'd like to turn it over to any additional questions you may have or comments.
I just have a quick question. It was just, when I watched it last, at the last hearing, I couldn't understand, but I thought I heard something about the curb cuts and stuff, you were doing the DOT application, but you were going to start construction before you got the approval from the DOT?
Yeah, so a lot of times DOT, so DOT process, we have to go before you first get approval and then for them to actually act and give their approval. But a lot of times, you just, sorry, get started with the work and then they'll issue it through. Sometimes there's some minor changes within their plans, but it's usually how it goes. Just helps keep the process moving. They can do stuff on site, and then all the work within the right-of-way happens later on anyway.
And nobody's ever like, you know, started construction, and all of a sudden, they're like, no, we don't want you to do it that way at all and do something else?
I mean, they had had changes, but nothing that changes the product. It might be, sometimes they've had it where they just want the radius be a little bit bigger for turning, but nothing that's anything substantial.
That's all I get.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
No.
Okay. We already had considerable public comment, so I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the two public hearings, SP 125 and SP 2-25.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Dan?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Yes?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Scott?
Okay.
Jim?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so you have the conditions in front of you. Again, they were prepared in advance for review by the board. Are there any questions or concerns about the conditions?
So are there separate conditions for each, or is it just all?
No, there's one in each.
I think I lost that.
We do them together or something?
We'll do them separate. So I'll start with the public safety facility on Washington Street, so...
Okay, so I'll make a motion. It's got to be in here somewhere. No, that's a... Oh, there it is. Yep, it's somewhere else.
There should be two sets of conditions, right, Sue? Yep.
Nope.
You have double folders, Dan.
There we go. All set. All right. All right, I'd make a motion to approve, can I do them together?
Well, Scott was making the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't even hear it.
I'll make a motion to approve SP 1-25 with the draft conditions as shown.
So this is for 369 and 375 Washington Street? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Dan?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And I'm an I. All right. For Zero Monroe Street, I need a motion to accept the conditions or approve the conditions for Zero Monroe Street.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve SP 2-25, conditions as shown, 1 through 17, for Zero Monroe.
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Dan?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And I'm an I. All right, good.
Thank you.
Thanks. A lot of work went into this, and we appreciate it.
Very exciting.
Yep.
Just don't want to... Thank you.
We'll give people a few minutes to exit the room. So I think there's a couple of things that Sue wants to go over with us.
That's our next meeting.
Right?
Yes.
So, let us know what you need.
I am going to submit four applications for the One Stop Community Grants. We have the Housing Production Plan, which expired in 2024. We have a zoning map, which the last time that was updated was 2015. We have the Center Protection District, and then we also have Downtown Wayfinding and Branding Initiative. So I'm hoping you all had a chance to look it over. I need your approval before I submit these, which I need to do by June 4.
So this needs to be approved and shown in the minutes?
Correct.
And that goes with your applications?
Correct.
Okay. Do we need approval for each one of these separately?
I would be safe.
I would to be safe, too.
Yeah, be safe.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, so let's do the first one that I have here, which is the zoning map.
I'll make a motion that we approve the zoning map application as submitted.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none? Dan?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And I'm an I. Okay. Why don't you tell us a little bit about the Downtown Wayfinding and Branding Initiative before we vote on it, just so...
Sure. So that is basically to provide just some branding and just to make it more user-friendly for businesses and residents and so forth, and to promote additional growth.
Great.
Just so that the materials are clear, ADA compliant. We just want to invite more businesses and residents into town.
Okay, and you've taken the language from the master plan and made it part of the, helped you with the application?
Yes.
Okay, so this has been identified in the master plan as something that we'd like to do. Just a detail, so this is for the actual branding, the way the signs would look, a consistency of the signs across the area?
Correct.
How about the signs themselves? Is that included in this, or is it just for that, like, branding document and style guide and things like that?
I believe it's the second one, just the branding, the style.
Okay, so the signs will be... So the, the signs will be, will be, need to be?
So I think the grant gives you a certain, it's for twenty-five thousand, I think.
Thirty.
Thirty, last year, it was twenty-five. So it gives that you to work with the designers and stuff to come up with the whole branding campaign. So if all of that, the funds aren't used, it can be used for the sign.
Great. Yep. No, so we got it. So it's a style guide and, you know, whatever look and feel for the signs. And then we'd have to purchase the signs using those designs?
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
And so to help promote, like Sue did a great job on this, I think.
Yeah, you did a, a great job on all of these, Sue. I want to thank you for that. We all want to thank you for that.
Yeah. But this is like especially with having some vacancies in town and like trying to grow the downtown, like having a good branding campaign for the town is, you know, other places have shown that it's really beneficial to have that consistent look throughout town.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the application for downtown wayfinding and branding initiative.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Dan Taylor?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Jim? Alicia?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And I'm an eye. Excellent. Okay, next is the housing production plan. We did this way back in twenty seventeen or eighteen, I think? Twenty eighteen, okay. Time flies. And it was a pretty comprehensive plan. A lot came out of it. Having a housing production plan also helps you qualify for grants as well. Um, so it is an important document. It was also very helpful in informing the master plan. Um, it should be updated every five years?
Yes.
Every five years because, as you know, the census changes. There's some growth that occurs in town that should be taken into consideration in the housing production plan and other factors that come up from time to time. So it, demographics may shift a little bit, um, other things may shift. So having a updated housing production plan is an important document to, to keep up to date. Any other comments and concerns about the housing production plan? And we worked with the Old Colony Planning Council the last time. They worked very closely with us on it and they're an excellent resource.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, housing production plan application.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Um, okay, roll call vote. Dan?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And I'm an eye.
Jim?
Jim? Okay. Thank you for reminding me.
I'm just assisting.
Okay, so this is for the center protection district, the next one. So Sue, why don't you tell us a little bit about this grant for those who are, may not be as familiar with it?
Sure. So, um, so we've had some changes in the center protection district. As you know, Stop and Shop is no longer here. And we want to invite, again, more businesses in. Also with the fire department, um, that building will be vacant in the next, you know, two years or so. So the whole, the whole area would just like to, um, invite more businesses and also discuss whether it should be a mixed use of residential and commercial within the center protection district.
Okay. I know in years past, we've had mixed use available in the center protection district, something that we took out of the bylaw about five years ago, maybe longer.
Longer.
Because we weren't getting a mixed use.
We weren't getting enough mixed use applications, but I think it's something to be looked at again. Cause again, things change.
Yeah.
Um, and I think it's always a good idea to take a look at this part of town since it is our center and take a look at it separately. If we're awarded the grant, I think at that point, we can try to put together a committee or something, the people that kind of work on it. But I think the object here first and foremost is to get the grant. And it's for how much, Sue?
Fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And then also, um, OCPC has, um, will give a, um, um, a resource of ten thousand dollars.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Like a bonus on top of it?
Yes.
All right. I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the center protection district application.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Dan?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Jim? Oh, he's calling me back. There you go. Hi, Jim. Hi, Jim. Okay. Did you hear enough about the center protection district grant application?
Yes.
Okay. What's your vote? Okay, Alicia?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And I'm an eye. All right. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue, for all your work.
Yes, thank you very much. All right. Anything else from you, Sue, that we need?
Uh, yes, minutes and I have the plans for Chase Bank that I need a signature. And I need to run upstairs and make some changes to the decisions and then I'll come back down.
Okay. So, um, let's vote the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from Monday, April seventh, twenty twenty-five as shown.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Dan?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Jim? Alicia?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay. So you've got the minutes. Do we need to stay in session for you to do this?
No.
Okay.
I just, nobody can leave.
Okay, we, well, we have some plans to sign, uh, and Sue needs to make some changes to some decisions, but other than that, is there any other business before the board? All right, hearing none? Oh, town meeting? Yep. Yeah, town meeting is May thirteenth at seven PM at the, uh, high school. And we'll have several, um, articles on the warrant and there's three that we're well, we're sponsoring all the zoning bylaws, um, warrants. The select board's kind of behind the change to the marijuana. And then we've got the, um, ADUs. Um, and I've talked, we've talked about this in the past. So for those who don't know, we, our past meetings, we've talked about these at length and had public hearings about each one of them and received public comment. Uh, for those who are interested in providing it. And I did speak with the select board at their last meeting to explain them. And the select board has endorsed the three that we talked about and the others. So the three that we talked about were the ADUs, accessory dwelling units and complying with state law. Adding, um, public utilities to the uses allowed, um, in certain zones. And then the change to the business B zoning only on Washington Street north of Barker Street and that small piece that is business B on either side of Washington Street to extend the setback from four hundred feet to eight hundred feet to match the setback, setbacks of the adjoining zoning, which is the commercial, uh, and residential district. So those are the three articles that we'll speak to at town meeting. And that's it. Anything else?
Can we adjourn before we sign?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Dan?
Yes.
Heather?
Aye.
Jim? Alicia?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And I'm an eye. Thank you very much, everybody.